I got it Craig.
You're wrong. All right, we'll call this meeting to order for Monday, September 12th, two thousand twenty-two. I hereby remind the committee and audience members that this meeting is being recorded. So we'll do the roll call. We have, I don't see Dave. Jess?
Here.
June?
Here.
Lisa?
Here.
I don't see Mike or Randy. Susan?
Dave, Dave Carney's joining now.
Do we have Susan? We can't hear you.
Yeah, it would help if I unmuted.
There you go. Tom?
Here.
Dave? All right. All right, our next meeting will be on Monday, October 3rd, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M. First order on the agenda is our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from August fifteenth. Accounts payable warrants, payroll warrants, and three donations.
Right.
Yeah.
Like to pull out some items?
Sure.
The donations I'd like to do separately. I'm fine with the rest of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Individually, the donations.
No worries. All right, so the consent agenda minus the three donations. Any objections to that? All right. So this is for in favor of the consent agenda. Just the payroll warrants, accounts payable warrants in the minute. So Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I will vote yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Craig, I'm sorry to interrupt. I did not hear who moved and then seconded. On the consent agenda.
That's a good point. I don't think we actually did that. I'm out of practice as well. Can I just get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
They're moved?
Second.
The, uh, I think the motion is to approve the minutes and the accounts payable.
Yeah, I know what the motion is. I didn't know who, who moved and who seconded. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, yeah.
And Jess?
Trying to formalize it, sorry.
All right, so now we'll take the donations. The first donation is five thousand three hundred forty dollars to the district from Fund Five Eighty-Five for Investigating History Power Program.
So.
So I'll take a motion, then we can discuss it if you want.
So moved?
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments on that first donation? Susan?
Um, I guess my first, there's kind of a two-part question. So I'll just start with part one. What is Fund Five Eighty-Five?
Craig, if I can answer, that's a grant from DESI. And it is just one of the opportunities that actually we applied for. Probably in the late spring to provide, they had some new curriculum materials from grades five through eight, and we had applied to be a recipient of, to be able to use those materials as well as to get some training around that.
So the grant money covers?
So we were approved just for grade seven, and it covers the cost of substitute coverage as well as for teachers participating outside of the school day.
Okay, the paperwork said more than seven, but for us, for our district, it's just grade seven. Got it.
Yes, grade seven, correct.
But the opportunity was for other grades too. Okay. And then it's a grant we applied for. It's from D E S E, and it covers materials, training, substitutes.
Correct.
Okay. Grade seven. I didn't get a chance to look it up. What is the the social studies topics, you know, on a high level that are normally covered under grades seven?
So I don't have those specific topics in front of me, but there, it's, we're piloting two modules this year. One is around Southeast Asia, and then I don't recall the second module that we're doing.
Asia, yeah. The, I was talking like without this program, what do we normally teach seventh graders about in social studies? I know this is in addition to what we normally teach.
Well, the scope of this is accepting a donation or a fund, so I don't want to get into beyond that scope for this motion. It's strictly for accepting a donation that allows teachers and educators to attend professional development and the substitute coverage for that.
I guess what I was curious is that, like, I know some years is U.S. history and some years is world history.
That's.
It was kind of at a high level, yeah.
I understand. That's Mr. Superintendent, do you have a comment?
No, I was just gonna say, in order to answer questions, we would need to have those questions in advance of the meeting. And then that way, Dr. Boris or potentially Ms. Camo could be there to answer the questions.
Are there any other questions or comments on the donation? Or grant?
Right, because school committee does approve grants before we use it. So I get it. So it's not technically a donation. It's a grant from D E S E that we applied for.
All right. Seeing no more questions, comments? Okay, so this is to approve receipt of the five thousand three hundred forty dollars. Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you. The next one is one thousand dollars to North Middlesex Regional High School from North Middlesex Community Cares to be used as partial payment for the Chris Herren presentation scheduled for Thursday, September twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved? Accept that?
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. To, um, Jesus, Community Cares for donating that funding.
I will second that. Thank you as well. All right, seeing no questions. Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous. And the final donation is ten thousand dollars to North Middlesex Regional High School to purchase eight-foot-high wind screens for the turf fields.
So moved.
Second.
Um, Dave, thank you. Any questions or comments? And I see Randy has joined us. Mr. Carney?
Yeah, can you remind us one more time who is making that donation?
So it was Life Touch. They're our school photographer. What we had signed a five-year deal with them, and part of that deal was to do something around the turf field for a donation that would both benefit the school district, but also provide them with some level of advertisement as well. Wind screens were something that we were lacking. And it's something that, again, I think it's, if you've had the chance to see them, we've gotten a great deal of positive feedback on the wind screens that have been installed with our new logos, you know, kind of like the branding of N M, essentially running along Proctor Road from end zone to end zone. And it was, it was part of the five-year contract to do something like that with Life Touch to, again, benefit the district and provide them with some level of advertising as well.
Fantastic. Yeah, no, I drive by every day and it looks great. So I just wanted to thank the, uh, the people who made the donation.
Right, thank you.
Susan?
Um, I was just curious about the, um, expected lifespan of the wind screens?
If we take care of them, they can, we've been told they last anywhere from four to five years. Which means, you know, to try and to get them, it is a project putting them up. For sure, it took, I would say it took the facilities department close to three days to get them up. But the expectation is, is that if we are expecting high winds, you know, anything around a strong tropical storm or hurricane-force winds, the expectation would be to take those wind screens down. Otherwise, they will obviously not last. But generally speaking, they are on a lot of high school and college campuses, and they do last. They are high quality, but they cannot sustain a strong wind. In addition, will cause damage to the fence as well.
So, um, is, this, this is the something that we decide we like and want to continue with is the hope that when we renew the Life Touch contract, that's kind of the end of their life, that we'd also get a new set of wind screens? I'm just curious if we're going to inherit that financial responsibility at some point, or whether the intention is for Life Touch to kind of renew it when they need renewing.
So it's certainly a hope that I have. I know that when we discussed it, it was something that they said that they would certainly consider. And it's not something, we also did not use the entire donation, so we did end up, I think, with, in the neighborhood of two thousand dollars left over. So it did not cost the full ten thousand dollars either. So if there is damage or something needs to be replaced, then we can certainly look at that. But it would be something that would be on the table. I've had, I've had a relationship with Life Touch for a long, long time. And they were very happy that North Middlesex moved to having a consistent photographer pre-K to twelve.
I just, um, well, you know, I was curious if it's something we like, and then it becomes our financial responsibility, you know, when it needs to be replaced, or whether we can hope that it may be continuing with Life Touch and ooh, could we use the money for turf payment instead? Or the leftover money towards turf payments, but perhaps that's not appropriate.
They've, um, that's certainly something that I could certainly discuss with them, but they did want some advertisement out of it as well.
All right. Thank you, Randy.
Um, I was just wondering, um, is there a contract with them for this donation for the, for the screens? Because I know we had a contract for one A when they did the advertising. And I want to say, I had to go back and take a look. I remember we were playing with the idea of this type of stuff in one of the policies. I'm not sure we ever finished that up. But again, just having a contract which would say how long the donation will keep them up for and who's responsible if they're going to disrepair and that kind of stuff, so that the, we don't incur costs that we're not expecting.
So there is a contract that outlines the, the five-year contract with Life Touch, again, being the school photographer. Anything, and it talks about them giving us money for the wind screens with advertisement. It also talks about additional perks that come with it. They're also going to be helping us out with the where are they now campaign, and that comes with that contract. We're going to be identifying graduates and celebrating them at the high school with, with banners, basically a photograph, year of graduation, and accolades since their graduation, so that the students can see, you know, what happens after high school and have something, have something to look forward to with regard to a career. So that is all outlined in the contract. Life Touch had, I think, three of our seven schools at the time, and now they have all seven, but that's, that's a contract that is signed every few years, depending upon how long the contract is for.
All right, something to keep in mind when it expires, that we take a look at the condition of these, and we have something in there for the wind screens for the next renewal. And that we keep an eye on that.
Sure.
And Susan, do you have something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm excited about the wind screens, and I think it's a great idea. I just wanted to clarify that. I wasn't sitting here fighting against it. I mean, the reason the school committee accepts donations is so we can, you know, beat up the financial end a little bit and make sure that we can handle the future. We understand the future when we're accepting money. Thank you.
Excellent. Dave?
Is there any issue with taking them down in the event of like a major storm or anything like that? We have a thing worked out with them where we will take it down and then put it back up in a reasonably, you know, reasonable timing?
So the facilities department would, would take them down. I believe they're also going to look to take them down in the winter as well. And then put them back up in the spring. Again, it is somewhat of a job, and it will help preserve them. So making sure that they're taken down, you know, in a timely manner, that they're stored properly to make sure that there's no damage with stored. I think that's a bigger concern, making sure that pests don't get at them and things of that sort, because oftentimes, unless they have stored indoors in a climate-controlled area, which we do have access to now with, it's Quanah Cook, it could potentially cause damage. So it is something that the facilities, the facilities department is aware of. They actually had wind screens, just plain gray wind screens that they were planning to install, and this, this essentially just helped dress up the facility. In both sets are up, one is a backing and one is and one is a more dressier option.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so this is to accept the donation for the wind screens, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes. Sorry, I'm having problems.
No worries. Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is also unanimous. Thank you. We did not have anybody register for public comments. I do not have a chairperson report other than, uh, just to say, welcome back to the, to the new school year. Hope everybody is doing well, and Superintendent, I'll turn it over to you for your report.
Sure, so, um, again, we have not met since the beginning of the school year, and we did have a very smooth opening overall. There's definitely a vibe of renewed energy in the district after what's really been a very difficult two and a half years. So really could not have asked for a smoother opening for our first two partial weeks and our first five-day week this week. So looking forward to a great year, a year of normalcy, I hope, and a year where we can kind of put the pandemic behind us, as I mentioned previously, that DESI is referring to it now as an endemic, which, which is a great thing. They also wanted to take the opportunity to recognize some employees who are, are in their twenty-five years of service. They began their careers in nineteen eighty-seven. We have Sandra Beesler, Jane Dunbar, Jessica Martin, Tina Ross, Kate Stepinski, Valerie Travato, and Virginia Woodward, all who have done twenty-five years of service in the North Middlesex Regional School District. So obviously thank them for their service and dedication to N M. And we also had a large number of new hires this year. We did have some new positions as part of the budget through ensuring that we have proper social, emotional supports within our staff district-wide. But ultimately, and I will share this with the committee, we ended up with a total of thirteen support staff, which are both general assistants and power professionals, five new administrators, whether it be building or district base, and twenty-nine licensed educators this year. So a pretty large number of new staff, something that is being recognized across the state is that there is going to be an increase in competition. There has been clearly a lot of publicity out there of people leaving the profession and the colleges not being able to keep up with the number of vacancies that exist. And on top of that, it's creating competition from one district to the next with regard to payment, the attractiveness of a contract and what contracts look like. So I will say that overall, N M is in a really good spot. We did not, we do not have any vacancies at this point. There are districts out there that are still looking to fill, in some cases, double-digit numbers of positions, which is extremely difficult, but it is something that we, that we will need to keep in mind moving forward. You know, just from a budgetary standpoint, to make sure that we remain competitive, something that we are going to do is begin the process of looking at, and I'll discuss this with the committee at a later date, of looking at doing an independent study to make sure that all of our collective bargaining agreements are on par, at least with our surrounding districts. So again, we can continue to attract the best possible teachers for our students. And that's all I have. Questions?
All right, thank you, Superintendent.
Yeah.
Next up, we have under whole business, the school committee workshop. Superintendent, if you had anything to speak to on this or?
No, I added that to the agenda. I wasn't sure if, if you all needed to talk about it prior to, prior to the workshop, so I just put it in there as a placeholder.
Okay.
I can certainly just add, you know, this is something that we've, we've been talking about back and forth for a while and trying to find the right person to do it, trying to find someone that's available to do it. Dr. Ash is, comes highly recommended. He was a former superintendent in Lexington, former special education director, former union president. And is now retired and working for Rebuson Associates. He, he did the same workshop recently in Tingsboro and in Chumsford, and I have heard nothing but very positive reviews from those. Obviously, the key is going to be getting as many school committee members to come as possible, just to make it as beneficial as possible. So they're not too, so it fits into as many people's schedules as we possibly can. It is going to be school committee and central office, so would be, again, myself, Dr. Reese, Mr. Cormier, Ms. Camo, Special Education Department, Ms. Haynes, Human Resources, so it will be the entire central office staff as well. Just talking about roles and responsibilities, how to work effectively as a team, and how to improve upon what we already do.
And that is the seventeenth at five thirty at the high school?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on the workshop or comments? All right. Thank you. Moving on, new business athletic extracurricular handbook language, and there should be, that is in the packet as well for folks. Superintendent, is you or someone?
I, so I can certainly speak to this, just going back and forth here. So really, just the key to this is making sure that our coaches are well aware of hazing and bullying and what could potentially take place after school, whether it be on the playing field, in the gym, on school property, in the locker room. And adding this into the handbook to make it very clear, this is something that our new athletic director has already covered with his staff. The other piece of this is making sure that the school district or supervision after school pays attention to what's happening in the locker rooms. Long ago, you know, if he came in issue where coaches would be in the locker rooms on a regular basis, and that is something that districts have moved away from. So what we have done and what, what Mr. Dawson has put in place since his arrival is that he makes sure that the coaches' offices, which, which connect to the locker rooms, the doors are open at all times, so they can generally hear what's going on. And they also walk through the locker rooms multiple times. They don't stay in the locker room, but they do walk through. Again, just to make sure there, there are no issues, behavioral issues in the locker room. People are behaving. And again, to kind of focus in on hazing, bullying, teasing, things of that sort, to make sure that it's not happening. But we do not have a situation where coaches are actually sitting in the locker room. That is something that has been, we've, we've been advised against for a long time, and that's statewide, that has been advised against, but there is, I would say, walkthroughs, and there are certainly doors open to the coaches' offices, so they can hear what's going on. And if they do hear a commotion, they go in and address it. So these are things that, again, the State Association is recommending that we add into our handbook. They did provide model language. But it's just basically stating that coaches cannot be ignorant to the possibility of these things happening. It can't be absolved if something does happen after school. The other piece that we're working on is making sure that there is supervision, and Principal McMahon is working on this to make sure that there is supervision after school, because there's never really been a position for that, and oftentimes, the school administration, you know, kids oftentimes will congregate, especially at the high school in the Commons area, and there's not really a staff person that's there assigned. There's no real position for that. So we are working on utilizing stipends that are not being used to fill that, to make sure that it is supervised moving forward.
Thank you. Susan, you have a comment?
Yeah, the, this definitely sounds like it's something that applies to the high school. Is all or some of it also applies to the middle school?
Components may apply, and there may be certain components that do apply to it. You know, it is something that they certainly recommended for, for the high school, but it's certainly something that we could easily add to the middle school too, just to be safe.
Definitely basketball.
Excuse me?
Basketball teams at the middle school are using the locker rooms. And I don't know if the middle school students are congregating at all, and we need some supervision at the middle school.
So it's certainly a little less. The way that the middle schools are set up, as far as congregating goes, generally speaking, they're in, they're in sight, they're in the line of sight of the main office, where the way the main office is set up at the high school, it's not really a clear line of sight to the commons. So that's essentially why we were working on getting staff people assigned there. So it is a little different. Again, at Hawthorne Brook, you have a clear view of the lobby area. In this, it's the same thing, a pretty clear view of the lobby and entryway. We're at the high school. Because of the way the vestibule was set up, you really don't have that clear view. It's a lot more difficult. So again, just making sure that we have coverage there. We can certainly add this language to the middle schools as well for the basketball teams. I know that there are field hockey programs and track programs as well. It certainly wouldn't hurt to have it, because the coaches, they would have responsibilities as well.
I mean, yeah, to me, if we're addressing athletic extracurriculars and a waiver related to that, any school will reoffer athletic extracurriculars. And today, are you looking for us to approve adding this language to the high school handbook, and it sounds like also the middle school handbook? Like, what exactly is the action you're looking for?
Well, in order to have it moved into the handbook, the school committee would have to approve it. So if it's, if it's something you, you have not had adequate time for review or consider, you can certainly wait until October third and do it then. If it's something, again, I'm pretty confident that this is already in practice through the athletic director primarily, in working with the coaches, but also we covered hazing, bullying extensively at our admin institute as well. So the principals are pretty well versed in it also.
I, I did read through it, and I have to say it wasn't completely clear what we were, is it, is it, by the way, parents, the coaches might be in the locker room? Is that what we're trying to say to parents, and they're saying, yeah, I'm okay with that?
It's essentially just to clarify, to make sure that coaches know that they have a responsibility for any type of misbehavior that's happening while they are working with kids. And again, the supervision is just a way to potentially stop that. And when I say supervision, I mean the walkthroughs, making sure that, you know, that there's someone, there's someone listening, there's someone doing an occasional walkthrough through the locker room to make sure that, you know, that, that we don't have students that are being targeted. You know, that tha- that we don't have students that are being targeted in any way, shape, or form.
Yes, I I did read through it, and as a parent, I'm being asked to sign it. I guess I'm not clear when I'm waving. I guess I'm waving my right to. Sue a coach for a bullying incident that I felt they should have caught. Um, and I don't understand, like, it sounds like it also needs to be part of the process of registering for a sport. But I'm still not clear as a parent when I'm waving.
So Superintendent, could we maybe get a view of what is there today? Cause I know. Students or parents do sign waivers already, and it might help to see what the, to Susan's point, what what has changed to then know. What we're asking now versus what we've asked yesterday.
Absolutely. For the next meeting?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate, Susan. Is that? Is that okay with you?
Sure.
I think I'd face value it. I mean, if you don't, uh for me, I don't know specifically what's already being asked or or what's being required to be waived. Um, so it's hard to react to.
Right.
To this, to know, oh, well, now are we adding maybe bullying, which maybe it wasn't there already? Are we adding maybe some personal injury that may not have been there in the past? I just can't make that comparison.
Okay, I can do that.
Go to the trampoline place, you sign the thing, as if I break my neck, it's not your fault.
Right.
Um, I don't really understand what. I'm waving if my child gets bullied, it's my fault. It's, you know, it's not the coach's fault. It's like, I don't, I'm not. I need to, in English, what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Yeah, I read it, but and then when we talk about this walk-through locker rooms and the doors being open, and I don't really see the connection to this language. The 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 English we're talking.
Right. Okay, I can get that information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments on that, and we'll we'll Superintendent will take that action to bring this back to the to the next meeting? All right. Moving on to, um, thank you Superintendent, thanks Susan, um to subcommittee reports. Um, any updates from Accelerator Repair or Building Committee?
I have a building committee update.
Okay.
I asked Rob, I saw the name, I go, is there something you would like me to pass along to the committee? He said that Herey is working with uh the MSBA to close out the project. Um, here is our owner, project manager. There has been a delay due to a discrepancy in the procure system. It doesn't appear it will affect our final budget, but it is requiring a lot of manual updates. Conservation Commission towards the site in August and is prepared to close out our wetland permits. Their upcoming, I mean, September twenty fourth meeting. When I know Nancy's been um involved with the MSBA and the procure issue and staying on top of that.
Excellent. The light at the end of the tunnel is getting ever so brighter.
So knock on wood, everybody.
I know, right? I appreciate that, Susan. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on to the other building committee, Ashby Elementary Building Committee, June.
Sure, um, at our last meeting, we named some roles that we wanted to have included in the committee. Um, since then, though, we had found out that we could not have the Ashby Town Administrator. Or an Ashby Fincom rep because um of state ethic rules. So um the those people will not be on the committee. Um, I do have a list of people to appoint. Um, who I can read through, but for full transparency, there is one extra position we wanted to add. Um, we have a district facilities director, but we also wanted to include an alternate for that. Um, both people have a very strong interest in being part of this committee. Um, the alternate would be Dan Johnson, who has been a custodian for thirty years, so he knows the building very well. Um, and just a reminder, the alternate members that we have are not voting unless. The member that they're alternating for is out that day um for the meeting. So I'll run through the list of names if we're ready for that. Um, so should I actually, should I move to appoint? The following people to the Ashby Elementary School Building Committee. Um, myself as the chair, Lisa as the alternate. Brad Morgan, Nancy Haynes, Jeremy Hammond. Um, as the facilities director, Dave Amari, and alternate Dan Johnson. Anne Cromwell Gap, who's the principal, Karen Walsh, who's an Ashby elementary teacher. Dave NATO is the Ashby Select Board Representative. And our citizen representatives are Scott Hobart and Don Roy, the alternate Walter Hanson.
Just um before that gets second true, can you just clarify which roles are voting versus not voting?
Sure, yep. Um, so school committee, superintendent, facilities director, principal. Select Board Representative and Citizen Representatives are voting members. Non-voting members is the business manager, director of technology, and the AES teacher. And then the alternates, when the person that they're alternating for is.
So what was the size of, if you had full attendance of voting members?
Of voting members. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Just curious about how many people need for a quorum. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Can I get a second, please? I have no idea what that was.
Lisa.
Thank you. All right, do you have any other questions, Susan, or we also?
So.
Seven members, okay. Any other questions or comments for June? Yes, no, Susan?
I realized I should know, so I'll just ask later. Not, it's not part of this vote.
All right. All right, so this is to appoint uh the members that uh June just uh listed off for us, so Dave?
Yes.
Uh Jess?
Yes.
June? Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes with thanks to those that uh volunteered uh June for coordinating that, uh much appreciated and looking forward to uh. To seeing what the committee comes up with, so.
Our meeting is is planned to be on the twentieth, so and then we'll try to have the one on the twenty seventh as well, so we can get a. Couple under our belt before the next school committee meeting.
Great. Excellent. Um, anything else, June or Susan, do you have a question related to the building committee?
I, my question, uh to keep it simple. I assume at a prior meeting that I probably was unable to attend, we discussed the scope of um what this committee is is been charged with.
This somewhat, um, we are going to be looking at the various options that have been presented to us previously. Um, to make a a recommendation to the school committee as to which direction we think we would want to go. As far as repairs, renovating, or rebuilding. Um, and then we also need to make a recommendation about the feasibility. Study, because we could go with a very basic version or a more comprehensive version.
Okay, yes, I remember the feasibility study, which direction to go was on a prior um agenda, so that's a. Good, thank you. I think that works for, not that it has to work for me, but it does. Nothing has to, not that my opinion matters, that's what I was trying to say.
Does you got a vote?
It was decided when I wasn't here, so that is how it goes, and I like it anyway. That's all I'm saying.
Right, either. Any other questions, comments on the building committee? All right, thank you, June. Uh, communication, Tom?
Yeah, so uh we had our first meeting uh on this twenty fourth. Um, kicked around some different ideas about the website and kind of some navigation. Um, looked at uh corely kind of newsletter or posting, um just to kind of highlight some key issues. Um, make sure that that's, you know, a- as clear as can be. Um, and then Jess was actually kind enough to recommend um the community outreach coordinator from Townsend as someone. Um, to connect with as well, so we'll be inviting her to our next meeting. Um, I was able to uh adjust our meeting time from standard Alaska time, so I think we'll we'll have something in the next week or two. Uh, on the books.
I thought we'd be doing an offsite meeting, Tom. I was kind of excited for a minute, but.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's in the budget to uh take a cruise to Alaska, so.
Probably not. All right, and just uh just for the audience, um, Tom, this is focused on school committee communications, correct?
Correct, yeah, nope.
All right, any questions for Tom? Okay, moving on to finance, Lisa.
We have a meeting tomorrow morning. And then I have no other updates right now, but the budgets, um Nancy did include. Budget documents in our packets, if anyone wants to look at those.
I just, if if I can jump in, um, I did include them, but there's still a lot going on right now, so I I. I know there is new hires this week, as a matter of fact, so. Um, that things will change. I will try to get a uh, keep you updated. With a new one as that comes, including um some of the tuition purchase orders, which, you know, again, that takes time to get all those. Settled and in the right places and. Um, so there will be a bunch of changes coming, but I did want to get something out to the committee, just to say things are looking pretty good. I'm watching. Like I mentioned, uh specialty tuitions as well as um utilities, utilities, especially heat. I think all of us are going to feel that next winter. But unfortunately for the district, I might have mentioned this in one of our meetings, um our natural gas bid expires in December. And so we either will have to renew our, it's the supplier portion of it, so. We use either Unitel or National Grid, but then there's a supplier that supplies the na- the uh natural gas to us. That unfortunately is the end of a eighteen, I think it's an eight twenty-four month, eighteen or twenty-four month contract. In December, it's just bad timing, so we've been looking at bids and they're pretty horrific. Um, we may end up not. Accepting one of those bids and just kind of waiting, and I know Oscar is poised to help with. Um, using whatever fuels and tanks and things like that, so we hope we'll get through the budget process this year, but it's not. It's not good news, I think, for everybody right now. I'm hoping for some some light at the end of the tunnel for utilities, but I think it's going to be a tough year. So I guess stay tuned for the next update, and hopefully next meeting we'll have another one.
Right. Thank you, it's the Superintendent.
Is it uh appropriate to bring a- another um budget concern up now, or I know it shows up later in the agenda, but. We just kind of, we're kind of discussing it now, so wasn't sure.
Sure, um, I don't see anything later in the agenda, but.
Oh, okay, I I I thought it, I thought we had added, I apologize, I don't have the agenda.
Maybe it's for tomorrow morning, finance subcommittee.
Okay, I I just wanted, just wanted to point out that we um. I- in order to get the budget passed, i- if you recall, we did have to reduce the budget by three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, to to pass the budget in two of our three towns. Uh, and with that, three hundred thousand dollars, about two hundred and fifty thousand uh would have been for contingency funds that we use for. Move-ins, things of that sort that happen over the course of the summer, and that money was cut from the budget. Um, so the contingency money was cut with it as well. I do just want to let the committee know that since that time. We have had to hire three additional full-time staff members, an elementary teacher at Ashby Elementary. An elementary teacher at Bronham Brook Elementary, and also a full-time EL teacher. Um, all of those right now um are not necessarily problematic, because we are able to utilize some remaining S R funds. Um, but moving forward, uh those will have to be added into our operating budget, and it's likely. Um, just based on the way the elementary schools are tracking, um one was a grade two, the other one was a grade three. And the EL position is is likely going to stay, if not increase, uh that those positions will be in next year's budget as well, so. Um, that's an additional three point O F T Es that were already. Um, I would say behind on moving into next year's uh FY twenty four budget, so I just wanted to make the committee. Just essentially make you aware of that. Um, i- it is a concern, um as well as a- again, the competition for staff out there. It could create a very difficult um budget forecast for the next several years. In addition to the utilities uh challenge that Nancy just there.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Um.
So we do have the first budget summit on the same night as our workshop on the seventeenth, I believe, so. Um, hopeful that uh town administrators and and Fincom representatives and and others will. Attend and start to have these conversations early in the cycle, um start to talk about some of the growth. Opportunities that they're seeing in the respective towns and get ahead of uh. Get ahead of some of these issues, and so we'll see how that progress goes. Anything else for finance? All right, so negotiation and personnel, Tom, any update or news?
Um, not a whole lot I can share right now, but um there was a a question raised by um. The association um from the secretarial unit that we're working on responding to. Um, it's been shared with the negotiation subcommittee. Um, if we need to bring anything back to the full committee, we'll do so at the appropriate time, but uh right now, that's it.
Excellent. Thank you, Tom. Uh, last but always policy, Randy, any updates or?
Uh, we do have a policy meeting that we're scheduling, uh but we have not met uh. And I have not heard anything back from the state yet on the regional agreement. I'll be reaching out to them to see where they are on reviewing that.
Excellent. All right, um, any other uh business not anticipated by anybody? If not, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All right, I give that to Susan and Dave. Um, all right, to adjourn, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so we are adjourned. I appreciate the time, everybody. Have a good night, and we'll talk in a couple weeks.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody.